Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, January 10th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Before I move to the approval of the revised agenda, I just want to acknowledge the return of Mrs. Rodriguez. Welcome back. We're happy to have you back at the table.
Thank you.
And also, I would like to thank Dr. Hassler for stepping in during that month or so.
No problem.
No problems.
It had trials and tribulations, but I will say you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Awesome.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the approval of the revised agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Update on questions or comments from interested citizens. We didn't have any the last time. We also have no one signed up for this meeting. Approval of the minutes.
Can we still sign up now?
Sure.
Good evening. I'll be quick. My name is Tony Cardone. I'm the president of Parents Football Club. I just wanted to keep the scheduling of the football team in the mix going forward. I know that the county schedules their games starting this month. Going forward, I just want to make sure that we're on top of it and that we can actually have Friday night games. That's it. Anybody got any questions? You're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we do approval of the minutes? Approval of the minutes from December 6th. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action items. We have approval of a task force. It's actually called the Search Committee Task Force. Do I have a motion or any discussion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The people on the task force will be Jamelle Evans, Mike Suriello, Stacy McLeary, and Dawn Tauber. Policy reading. First reading of the policy manual update. Is there any discussion? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Waive first and second reading and adopt. Any discussion? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are up to personnel.
That was fast.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for approval of the items listed under personnel. One of the things I'd like to bring up before you vote is our, we have a significant list of retirements typical for this time of year. We have a few people I'd like to specifically mention. Kristin Rand here, who's here at the, "Thank you for your years of service." And I will say it quickly, so I don't get emotional, but Elsie Rodriguez's retirement is in the section as well.
Unless we say no.
No, you better say yes. These are tears of joy.
You told me if we're gonna hold it together.
No. You know, it's Lori.
Dude, she's so lucky.
We can take it off.
No way.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a lot of people retiring.
Would you like me to talk first?
Yes, please do that.
Give you a break. First and foremost, we want to thank Elsie for not only her dedicated service to our district and the children in our district. We want to also acknowledge and thank her for providing the board with a long notice period, as it will allow us the time to search and select the best possible candidates to fill this important role. Mrs. Rodriguez let the board know of her intent to retire in the fall and had to work through the auderous meetings with the New York State Retirement Fund
Yes.
to ensure that everything was in line and in order before officially announcing. As a result of her planning and proactive approach, the Board of Education has been able to establish a search task force, which we just voted on, and to start the process of searching for the next superintendent.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to turn it over to...
No, I'm very happy. This has been planned. So, I've shared with the board that I would be retiring this year. It's, I have 39 years, so no comments about, where's Joe Coto, about my age. Thirty-nine years in education and 23 of them here, and it's been wonderful. And I'm excited. And I want to thank everyone.
We'll miss you very much.
You pass those tissues back.
It's all really good, and I'm excited. What? I really am.
She is really happy. It just might not seem that way.
No, no. It's just, it's tears of happiness and tears of, you know, people that I know for a long time who are also retiring.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We thank you for all of your service to the district. You're here till August, so...
I know. God keep it going. I'm only gonna cry this once, and then I can't cry anymore. So, let's get this through. But no, it's been a wonderful 23 years here. You know, I want to thank everyone. Everybody has been, this has been a very difficult job. I think the hardest thing that I have to do is that 4:30 call to make sure that we make a decision about a two-hour delay. That's the hardest part of my job, and making the decision to send students home early. But other than that, I have loved every part of my job, even COVID years. Yes, I said COVID years. And this is a great district, so I am excited about this new phase of my life. And I think the board is gonna do a great job of hiring the next superintendent, and I hope that the community gives this new person grace. This is a hard job to do, and I've done it for the past 10 years. And as I said, I've loved every part of it, and my job in July and August has really helped the new superintendent become acclimated. And I just ask everyone to give him or her grace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a vote to accept the items under personnel? Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and financial.
Mr. Cahill? Thank you. I respectfully request the approval of business and financial agenda items 10.1 through 10.8.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool, special education. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 12, we have discussion regarding the volunteer firefighters EMT exemption. So, I want to open it up to the board for any other additional questions or comments as a discussion. We will have to look at moving to a public hearing at some point, which would likely be February 7th. So, didn't know if there were any questions for Mr. Cahill or anybody else who might have more information that you might need before we move that forward.
I think, I just want, I have a question. I just wanted to verify, because I know we've discussed it a little bit recently, that if I'm understanding correctly, that when you're volunteering, it's where you reside, but where you are volunteering is the location that you reside in. Is that accurate? So, if you are paying Monroe taxes and you reside in the town of Monroe, you are a volunteer in that Monroe organization?
I, my understanding, Stacy, is so long as you're a volunteer within the school district, so in other words, we're the taxing jurisdiction, right? So, you're a part of a company that serves the district, you would be eligible for the exemption.
Okay.
So, there could be instances where you reside in Monroe, but maybe you're serving in another company that's nearby, but you're still all included in the Monroe Woodbury School District, so you'd be eligible for a Monroe Woodbury School District exemption.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. What was the amount that currently it would cost?
The estimate based on current circumstances. So, we went through an analysis, right, and we discussed that. The amount would be approximately $87,000 in lost tax revenue. So, the way the tax system works, we know this, it's basically just spread amongst of the tax base, school districts, taxpayers. And, you know, I had showed sort of an increase if it has the effect, which is to draw and entice more volunteers, you know, where we tiered it up from about $87,000, where we currently are, to about 105, with a 20% increase. And I went through, worked with Mr. Tanka Sally, and we literally went property by property. There were some properties which were on a list but not eligible, because they were either rental properties or vacant land. So, you know, some of the rules, residential property only, you have to be, reside there, has to be your primary residence. So, when we excluded some of those, it was about 114 eligible members. And we came up with the number, looked at the assessment, took 10%. That's at a 10% level, because that's one of the local options. You can go from, like, say, 1% up to a max of 10%. We talked about some of the other local options too, where you can, you can say someone has a permanent exemption after 20 years of service, and that would be looking back retrospectively. There's an option for someone who dies in the line of duty. You can make the surviving, unremarried surviving spouse eligible for the exemption. And same idea with someone who has a permanent exemption, so.
And what is the target that they're trying to get to? Because I know, you know, saying that there's, we're doing this because we want more people to volunteer.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a target that they're getting to that we could put numbers to, to understand? What, is it 20% more?
I'm not aware of a target. I don't know if anyone else is aware of that. I just think the idea is, go ahead. Do you want to step in, Mr. Tanka? The only other thing I would mention is, we're probably aware, there is an existing exemption. It's relatively low dollar value, and that will sunset in three years. So, in the absence of any action, the existing exemption would go away.
Okay.
And have we reached out? I know, I think we had mentioned about reaching out to other local municipalities, because this is on the plate for everybody. I think Dawn had mentioned that, that it's at the town level as well, as to everybody having an equal percentage. Have we discussed what's happening with anything as far as the towns?
I haven't, I would say comprehensively reached out to the towns. I believe the county has or will be approving this at a 10% level. I believe a lot of neighboring school districts have approved it already. We were having a discussion. I think Pine Bush School District has.
At the 10%?
I believe. But again, I don't, I haven't surveyed this, Stacy. I haven't recorded or comprehensively looked at it. But as far as I know, I think everyone is pretty much going at 10%. Okay. So, I think Valley Central School District has. I think Washingtonville was in the process of doing that.
Menasink.
Menasink, and I think Goshen as well. So, Marlboro, I know Marlboro has already done it. So...
I'm with the town of Chester, and I'm also a fire commissioner for the fire district for Chester. We pass our taxes at 10%. As a fire commissioner, I pass that with my other commissioners, and the town has passed it for 10%.
Okay. Thanks.
Monroe, Tony?
Yeah, so, we're looking to pass it at 10%. We have a public hearing on the 17th next week. I think there's a big flaw in this law that was written, because you have to own a home. And if you're trying to recruit new members, sad part is you're gonna get the youth, and a lot of the youth are renting homes. So, if it's gonna retain people, I see that, but it's not going to bring in the new members, from my perspective and from those that I spoke to, because they're not getting, and they're the ones that deserve it. Everybody that comes in here, listen, I've used Monbeja Fire Company in our district twice in my life, and thank God, thank God they were there for us. You know, one, we had a kitchen fire in my in-laws' home, and the other one was obviously the big Jamesway fire. So, to recruit new members, this has gotta be done across the board. We've reached out to our senator and members of the assembly, telling them how flawed this was, because it's important that those new members they're trying to get in also obtain that reduction.
Yes.
You know, I was gonna mention, I think there is an income tax credit at the state level as well. I think there is currently something like that, and I thought there was something related to that to get to that issue, Tony, of those who don't own a home.
Yeah, so that income tax just, I'm sorry, I'm a deputy commissioner of emergency services for the county, and I'm actually involved at the state level and the state associations for fire services. So, that income tax law, you're correct, there's one that provides a $200 income tax incentive. Problem with that law is you can only take one or the other. So, that's one of the things we're lobbying for right now, is to allow firefighters to use both, because that will address or help the ones that are rentals. And also, they're lobbying to increase it from 200 to something that's a little more meaningful, like 1,000, 1,200. That's right now being lobbied by all the state organizations, due to Governor Hopeless as well as the state legislature. So, we're hoping there's some movement back, which is why. I think it's important that this is passed for the ones that you mentioned, the properties. This will directly help those and help those people.
Are there any other questions?
I don't think so.
I just want to state on behalf of the board that we fully support the fire EMT and any first responders that we have in our communities. And I would like to just ask if the board agrees to move this forward to public hearing on February 7th at the next meeting? Vote? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we will schedule a public hearing on this matter for the February 7th meeting. Thank you. We are up to the report by student representative.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a good holiday season, and maybe if you enjoyed the snow last week. This past month, I focused on what I can do for MW. So, I was in attendance at the December High School BLC meeting, where we discussed more the potential of what the student task force will be leaning with. It'll be working with me on my survey with the cafeteria food, and I'll be rolling out this week, where we'll be able to discuss with students what they think, and then be able to implement it going into the next few months, as well as I'm looking into starting a project based on teaching students in high school about life skills. So, that would talk about finances, mental health, career development, car safety, healthy habits, and something that's kind of important to all internet safety, discussing all these during lunch periods when students have the time, and to kind of just be able to get them in five, 10 minutes, just discuss little small ideas that can really make an impact outside of school. These are gonna be also, as well done, I will be working with my AP literature class. We're focusing on climate change as we're reading climate change books. We're trying to see what we can do for the environment. So, my group, we are looking to do a focus on how we can teach students how to properly recycle, because many times we don't, and it's many times wasted. So, I'll be also doing that outside of the lunchroom, where we'll be able to play games and kind of teach students in a fun way how to properly recycle. And after that, I look forward to all the new work and continuing work I do this month. Congrats to Ms. Rodriguez.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports by Board of Education committees, visitation?
Yep. On December 7th, we went to North Main, and Mr. Coto, Mr. Davis walked us around the whole building. The new things that are installed in North Main, class there, they, like every other building in the district, they've had the outdoor window identification numbers put there for the fire departments. God forbid, there's an emergency, classroom door shades, window shades. There's just side work in the front and the side of the building that's been done, stucco work that really needed to be done has now been accomplished. A lot of the brick work had to be repointed and has been done, and there's more work to be coming under the recently passed bond along those, for those items. They had a couple of exterior doors, actually a total of six, replaced in the last couple of years. They had some beautiful murals painted on the walls by some parent volunteers. They painted a hallway by the cafeteria. It's a very long hallway. Monroe Woodbury purple. It's very dark, like the purple we see here, but it actually works pretty well, and looks really great. They cleared up this basement bombshell area, I'll call it, it's really about five feet high, and it didn't bother me, but some of the people had to duck. But if there's ever a zombie apocalypse, that's where we all should go, because this thing is like 200 feet wide and 100 feet deep, and they cleared it out, and they've got a lot more space down there. They had stuff there for 20-plus years, Mr. Coto and Mr. Davis were telling us. They also cleaned up the courtyard. They made a nice place for the teachers and the kids to eat outside. They showed us the, I'm gonna call it a hidden library classroom with a space theme to it. It's a really cool little room. They put some new doors in the art room and new cabinets in the art room. Then, their wish list, number one was the boilers. They experienced temperatures from 62 to 80 in the winter and up to 90 in the hotter months. Their boilers are from 1971. Good news is, as part of the bond, they will be getting replaced. They need some new electrical service in the entire school, a new fire alarm system, and they actually have some walls that have carpet on them in some of the classrooms and hallways, and we're looking to replace those with sheet rock walls. They're gonna replace some outside, some more outside doors and some concrete steps, and they do need a new PA system, because we're told it operates like the New York subway system, PA. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, next up, policy.
Yeah, we just approved a first reading on non-discrimination and equal opportunity and alcohol and drug testing policies this evening, and we waived the first reading on several other policies. We will be meeting again on Tuesday, the 16th, at noon, right here in the Ed Center, and it is open to the public.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, before I give an update on the audit committee, I just wanted to let everyone know the art that you see around the room. Monroe Woodbury High School senior art majors' artwork on display tonight from the exhibit, "An Artist's Response to Human Rights," sponsored annually by the Orange County Human Rights Commission. For more than a decade, our students have participated in this annual exhibition. This year, 35 students exhibited their artwork. So, I want to thank them for sharing that with us tonight. The audit committee update, on December 21st, we had a rescheduled audit committee meeting. We went through a number of documents. We will be also going out for an RFP to look at the audit firms and compare. It doesn't mean we'll necessarily change, but we could, depending on how that RFP goes, and there are more meetings scheduled. I don't have the next meeting date, unfortunately. But, you know, please look at the calendars. Public is invited to attend those if you're available. The last thing I wanted to do is, even though it's not an official committee, it's a task force, is I want to thank the task force members that I've been working with on the search committee, search task force. And I also want to call out and thank Mrs. McLeary, because she's really taken a lead on some of that work, working with the search firms and really coordinating a lot of that, which is very appreciative, because some of that can be very time-consuming. And she's been doing a great job with the communication, sometimes daily or multiple times a day with the committee. So, I didn't know if you wanted to give a little bit further update tonight on where that is, based on...
On the rear, okay. Um, yes, so, we're thankful to Mrs. Rodriguez. I don't want to look at her, because then I'm gonna get emotional, but for allowing the board to have the gift of time, because it is the most important job that we will have, is to hire a superintendent, and with the exception of Suzanne, none of us have any experience in doing this. And we've been very, very fortunate that it is going to be very large shoes to fill. So, we have taken this task very seriously. The board met, and at the advisement of our attorneys, they were able to give us the list of several firms. What the board decided to do for the sake of time and everybody that sits on the board was, we created a task force, which we've done in the past, and the attorneys have advised us we were able to do. That is Jamelle, Michael, myself, and Dawn. So, we have broken off and met. We were able to go through and research some of the firms that the attorneys recommended. We ultimately decided to interview three of them. We had them come in. We met all three of them, and then we ultimately presented everything back to the board, where we made the decision as to who we were going to move forward to hire. Again, for the sake of time and being able to work behind the scenes, we were able to get that contract on the agenda for this evening, so that we can now officially start putting things forward into the public. I want to say a huge thank you to the cabinet and to Carol Spendley, who I know is here somewhere, but thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
You know, again, I repeat that none of us have experience in this, you know, arena. So, we really did rely on the cabinet's expertise and Carol's expertise in helping us get together what the firm has sent us in regards to job postings, job descriptions, brochures, the website, et cetera. So, moving forward, what the public can expect, and we really do hope that you will give your feedback, is once everything goes live, we have a tentative timeline, so hopefully that you'll start to see some of this over the next week or so. Please visit the website. The website will be your greatest resource. There will be a space on there, if I'm not mistaken, that Carol has told us, similar to the Capitol Project. You will be able to go on to that space, click the link, and it will give you updates as to everything that is taking place for the superintendent's search. The stakeholders, which, again, we encourage everybody to speak up. This is your opportunity for the board to hear what the public has to say and what they are looking for in the next superintendent. With that, you will be receiving surveys. There will be public forums that will be held, both virtually and in person. There will be a designated email address specifically that goes to the firm that we hired. Again, so it doesn't come to us, it doesn't go to the cabinet, it doesn't go to the school district. It is a private, independent way that the board figured we could hold this with integrity. So, again, we encourage you to give your feedback. It's your opportunity to be heard. Again, all of that information will be posted with times, et cetera, on the website as it starts to come live. I don't think I'm getting anything else, am I? I think that was pretty much the gist of it.
They'll be scheduling various stakeholder group meetings, so do, as Stacy said, do watch for that and sign up. They'll do internal to the school district as well as community members. So, they'll do as many as we want, you know, but obviously, there's a reasonable level. So, we're looking forward to getting that feedback and receiving that to help guide our search process.
Exactly.
Dawn or Jamelle, do you have anything else?
No, just, I'd just like to say that as a father in the community, this is very important. If I wasn't on the board, I would still have been involved in what they're offering right now. The opportunity to be a part of the DNA of what we decide is gonna be a part of who our next superintendent is huge. I know a lot of you in this audience obviously know, because you work with this superintendent, but for anyone that may be watching, all eight of you, I just want to say that this is an opportunity to actually get involved. This is something where we actually do need to hear from the parents and the different community members outside of the school district, because it affects everyone. It affects your tax dollars. It affects everything, so please step up and be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to reports by board and central office. Mrs. Tauber?
Just congratulations to the retirees, but not yet, Elsie. And thank you to the speakers, and have a good night.
I wanted to wish everybody Happy New Year. Again, congratulations to the retirees, and I would like to thank our firefighters, EMTs, for a strong showing today. We do feel that you guys are absolutely essential to our communities, and thank you for doing what you do. It's very important. And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone, and I'd like to echo what Dr. Kaufman just said. We really, really appreciate all our EMTs and firefighters, and very much needed and very much appreciated. And I'd also like to congratulate all the retirees, and I'm gonna get emotional, but I'm going to miss you so much.
I'm still here.
Congratulations. I know you're still here, till the day, till the day after my birthday. Have a good night, everyone.
Well, thanks to all of our volunteers, as my colleagues had said. I'd like to thank Kevin Sullivan. He's moving on to a different position, so thank you, Kevin, for all your hard work in our middle school and other places, I'm sure, and have a great, safe night.
I want to say thank you also to the volunteers that are here this evening. I know it's definitely something that the board is taking seriously and asking questions, so that we can make an educated... an educated decision on it. I want to thank Mr. Cardone for getting up and speaking. The football program is near and dear to my heart, and I will say that I will be on top of everything to make certain that we are, you know, trying to make sure that we can get Friday Night Lights back in action. I want to say thank you to all the people that are retiring. I wish them all the best. I won't address Elsie until later in August, and I want to congratulate for tomorrow night. I know we were invited as a board to the National Honor Society at the high school. I look forward to attending that, and I want to congratulate all of our students. It is a process to get into that, and I know that our students not only have to excel academically, but, you know, it's, it's an organization that they really have to work to get into. They have to prove themselves, and it's a great night, so I look forward to attending that tomorrow evening, and congratulations to all of those students that will be inducted tomorrow night. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I also want to congrats to all the inductees for tomorrow, for the NHS ceremony, and to congrats our Monroe Woodbury High School basketball team on their win against Newburgh this week, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's really good.
Congratulations to retirees. Special shout out to Dotsey, Dawn, Mary Grace, and Kristen. You've been an excellent support to our technology team members and supporting our systems throughout the district. Elsie, thank you for being a mentor, but more importantly, leading this district with a passion and humility. Thank you.
It's going to be a long few months.
Sure is.
I'd like to like bar go for me.
Thank you, Don.
Well, I'll talk about Kevin, then. Kevin, good luck. Seriously, good luck, and thank you for your years here. And Elsie, I'm going to just, I know a lot of people are saying congratulations, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for your, your, I'm not done.
All right, all right, all right.
Thank you for your leadership.
All right.
And I, I'm very happy for you. I know you're excited about retirement, but we have a lot of work to do between now and the end of August, so let's get moving.
Thank you.
I mean, similar to what everybody has said, most importantly, welcome back. I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't even look towards August. I'm just, you know, I'm just happy you're back.
You've never said that in the 20-something years.
This is true. But, looking at this list of retirees, I, I know every single one of them, and there's a great deal of experience here. Some of them professionally, some of them personally, teachers of my own kids, people whose kids I've taught, and, you know, I wish every single person, and Kevin, even though you're not on the retiree list, but also, you know, I wish you the best of luck. Every single one of them deserve a very happy and healthy retirement after a long year of contributions to the school district. And I too have to, I have to wait in order to be able to pull my thoughts together on Elsie. No, I'm, I'm good, but it's been, it's been 10 amazing years. I feel like we've, we've been at it together for a long time, and
We certainly have.
And you're going to be missed.
You know, what else is there to say? Just looking at the list, the hard part about the retiree list is that you have to replace them, and that's a really hard thing to do. When you look at the five folks just from North Main alone, they have 154 years of experience just in Monroe Woodbury. So, to try to replace that, and all the institutional knowledge and all the experience, I wish you guys a lot of luck to try to do that, but it is, it is not easy. I'm going to save a lot of my stuff for the retirement party, so that's, that's probably a better thing, but I think it's important for everybody to know that when you've been here a long time, and, you know, we've all been here a long time, and you, when you sit in, you know, behind those doors, and you're part of conversations and actions, Elsie, I think one of the greatest things, one of the greatest assets about Elsie has been that she's led with her heart first, and she's never wavered in putting kids above everything else. And when you think about integrity and you think about honesty, she was brutally honest often, and that's, that's a fantastic quality. But I don't think anybody's going to be able to just simply replace you. I mean, I think you, you, you just can't, because of who you are and what you've brought. So, with that said, I echo what everybody said. Thank you. I mean, you have been fantastic for this district for not just the 10 years in this position, but the 13 years prior to that, too. So, like I said, I'll save all the other stuff for the next, the next time.
Okay, so, I'd just like to acknowledge Not Elsie, I'm going to hold off on Elsie.
Thank you, Patrick.
Because we've got a ways to go, right?
We do.
We've got a ways to go. But I was going to acknowledge and thank Mitchell Lang, who donated an instrument to the middle school music department tonight. I like to do that at every meeting. I like to acknowledge folks that think of the district. Remember the district. I'd like to thank the grounds and transportation staff for cleaning up after the big storm and getting us going, you know, yesterday as well. And with that, have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the fire department for coming down. We do appreciate everything you do, and the board's going to do the right thing here. Congratulations to all the retirees, including Mrs. Rodriguez, who we all have great emotion for, but I will not cry here, and we have eight months to do this, so I hope we can sort of keep this in context, that, you know, we all appreciate everything you've done, but we've got eight months with you, and we're going to make the most of that for the next eight months. Happy new year, and have a great evening.
It's always hard being in the seat, as everybody has said everything so eloquently, so I never really have much to say but to echo everyone's sentiments, and happy new year, and have a great night.
Yes, happy new year. Couple things. When it comes to the EMT volunteer firemen, so me and my, me and my kids, we see, when we hear the sirens, we see, we hear it differently. I hear it as someone's in trouble. They hear it as someone's getting help. I would hate to have a situation where we hear about someone needing help and not being able to get it, right? That sounds like the worst situation that anyone would want in this town, especially from our people. So, I hope that we do right by you guys. And Elsie, I'm not going to, I've been knowing you long enough to have a tearjerker moment with you, but I will say that, I'll be more real, sorry, not, not more real, but I'm going to be myself. There are different perceptions about how you do in your position, and I've seen you in front of, talking in front of people, as well as what happens behind the scenes, and I think that you're incredible. I'm going to miss you, and I will leave it at that.
I think I've heard a tear. I think I might have heard some tears.
No, listen first.
I think so.
Little, little chortle.
I think so.
Just a little bit.
A little wavering of the voice, maybe?
Well, Norese is sitting close to you, sir. I think if she heard it, I'm going to trust her.
Go Huskies.
Go Huskies.
Aaron?
Have a good night.
First, I want to say something about volunteering. I think it is one of the most important things that people can do as citizens in this country, is to volunteer. So, my, I am so appreciative of the firefighters and the EMT workers. You do this without getting paid. You do this because it's the right thing. I sit with nine board members who don't get paid for this work, so I 100% think and thank you for the work that you do. You save lives. You, you do things that I could not, never do, and so I am so grateful to you, and I know this board is very supportive of you. So, if you're watching, and you're a young person, volunteering is super important, because it's, you're paying it forward to your country, to your community, and I think that that sort unfortunately feels like it's a lost cause, and it's not. So, I'm sure that this board will be supporting you in whatever way necessary. So, thank you for your volunteering. On another note, we have this amazing kid. Her name is Madison. She's a middle schooler, and she's on this show called Meet the Competitors, the baking championship. It's kids. She is an amazing kid, so please watch it. It's on Monday night, and Madison is still up. She's, this is the third ring, right? And there is a girl on the show named Elsie. She is super funny, so you should watch that show, but you should be rooting for Madison, not Elsie. So, Madison is a middle schooler.
What channel is this on?
It's Food Network.
Food Network.
So, watch Madison. We don't know if she wins, but she's a great kid, and we're really, really super proud of her. So, that, you know, I just want to say, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Eric for taking these five weeks or six weeks. It wasn't easy, but you, convincing you to do it. But I think you did, you did an amazing job, and, you know, again, that call, those calls that we make are so difficult, and we always make them with, you know, making sure that our kids are safe, so thank you. And happy new year, everyone. And I, one more thing about all the retirees, they are all amazing people. Kristen Ranhair, I've worked with for over 30 years. She followed me here from East Ramapo. We came here together. She's probably shaking her head no, but that's true. You know, we have Dawn Russell, who's our director of transportation. She's also retiring. So, we've, we, we have our teachers, the four teachers at, at North Main, amazing people, teaching assistants, teachers at Central Valley, just a lot of people retiring, and I wish them well. Hopefully, we'll hang out at some point, because we won't be working and we don't have a job, so I'm excited about that. And I truly, I'm excited about this second part of my life, you know, this next phase. I have two beautiful grandchildren, I'm a wonderful husband, if he's watching. See, I said something nice about you. And, you know, two great kids. So, I am very blessed, and again, I'm very blessed to have served this community for the past 23 years.
Very good, thank you. A big congratulations to all the retirees, including Mrs. Rodriguez. I do want to thank Eric again. It's, it's a hard job, and I think that, you know, the rainstorm that caused all the flooding, sometimes people lack grace to know that, you know, when someone's new at the helm and trying to make the right calls, you don't always get it right. And you handled that with poise and grace, and you sent a letter to the families, and I think that says more about your character than anything else.
Thank you.
So, I want to congratulate the inductees for tomorrow. I will be there as well. I do have a family member getting inducted, so that's very nice. And as for the fire and EMT, I can only reiterate what everyone else said. We appreciate what you do. We appreciate you being there for the community, and the board will take action to move this forward for the next meeting. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personal matter?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.